Oh, there you guys.
We'll see, hopefully resetting may work, but I'm thinking this is the picture.
That's where we flow.
I will go. Okay, we have re-adjourned. And reconvened, that is true adjourned. I am completely all out of sorts tonight.
Holy moly.
Okay, item seventeen, consider approval to send no more than three other post-employment benefit scenarios to key benefit concepts for completion of the long-term OPEB valuation. Commissioner DeStefano.
Thank you, Board President. At the Benefits Committee that was on Monday, we did go through each of the different scenarios. And the one which was Scenario Five is the only one that passed from a three-to-one vote to move forward. I'm going to let Dr. Cale talk, you know, as the Benefits Chair, I don't know if I can interject this, but I would also recommend that we add the current benefits to go forward just for evaluation. So we have something to stand with it, so we can kind of go back and forth. So if we're going to do two, which would be the recommendation of me alone, I'm not going to speak for the other Benefit Committee members. But Scenario Five was passed three-to-one. The rest of the scenarios, the motion did fail. So I will pass this on to Dr. Cale.
Well, as you just heard, we have taken our OPEB scenarios to the Benefits Committee twice in the past month. And the first time we took the scenarios, we just kind of went through each of them individually. And if you are looking at your little booklet, it's your sheet that opens up to, and each of the scenarios were there. We looked at the overall cash flow of each scenario, knowing that the cash flow of each scenario is only partially what is involved with the costing of the scenarios. But the purpose was to begin to look at the scenarios and to narrow them so that we could send off a more defined selection of the OPEB scenario for a more intense costing. And looking at all of the scenarios that are moving forward in much more detail at this time. I'm not going to go through all the scenarios unless you want me to, but for the most part, at the end, at the back of the little summary is sort of a cheat sheet, if you will, of all of the components that went into each of the scenarios and how they align with one another. And once again, for the audience's sake and for you, some of the more important components of each of the scenarios include what are the date ranges, meaning when would a transition benefit end, when would a new benefit begin? Would the benefit include health and drug insurance? Does the benefit include some type of sick leave conversion towards additional health? Does it include sick leave conversion for Aviva, which is a health savings account? Would the Viva contribution be from the board? And then life insurance, if life insurance was included with the actuary valuation. So the Benefits Committee reviewed all of the scenarios, they reviewed the cash flow, and they looked at all of the things that we had discussed earlier as committees, as committees and as the board with regards to what were the considerations that were most important to us. And if we recall, one of the most important consideration is that we moved towards a defined contribution as opposed to a defined benefit, which is what we have now. We want to not necessarily, well, contain cost, of course, but also to be able to predict costs, more so than what we have at this time. We also knew that we wanted to link it to a healthcare benefit, and we wanted to make sure that there was some type of a transition from the current plan to a new plan. And so with that in mind, the Benefits Committee is bringing forward Scenario Five, which seems to address the criteria.
Commissioner DeStefano.
I would have a motion to continue with Scenario Five and also add what we considered Scenario Six, which would have been under letter H, which is the current, for further evaluation.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner DeStefano, seconded by Commissioner Schilling to move forward Scenario Five and the current plan. Discussion. Commissioner Murray.
Scenario, huh?
I was asking Commissioner Sodeman, my, I understand that, you know, getting to this defined contribution may be the healthiest thing to do for the district in the long run. But my biggest concern is making sure we have significant grandfathering piece, you know, if the consensus of us, you know, are heading that way. And if, please correct me if I'm wrong, I should say Scenario Five, and thank you for all your hard work, I mean, you've been working on this for a number of years. But if, correct me if I'm wrong, though, in Scenario Five, the grandfathering only goes to the age of 55. So can somebody explain to me in Scenario Five what the grandfathering is? So in other words, when I say grandfather, I mean, where are we drawing the line in the sand, where all those people above that line enjoy the current level of early retirement benefits?
Commissioner Sodeman.
The grandfathering, Commissioner Murray, there's currently two aspects to OPEB. We grant so many years based upon years of service and age and of service at the district. For example, that benefit is four years maximum for our teaching staff. And so the grandfathering under my scenario, and Dr. Cale rewrote it to make it legal compliant. But the thought was people who are aged 55 now and have the other qualifications would still get those full four years like they have right now, no difference. People who are aged 45, or next 10 years group, again rewritten for legal words, would get 75% of that, or in this case, three years. And next 10 years, age 35 to 45, two years, or half of that, age 25 and above to 35, one year. So that phases in that portion of it. The other grandfathering portion is converting our sick days. Yes, we're going to value them differently versus saying months of coverage to dollars added purchases. But it should still purchase, depending upon the kind of plan they have, a good portion of what they can now get for their conversion, depending upon what kind of plan they choose. It also provides a benefit that they do not have right now, in that currently if an employee wants to keep on teaching because they enjoy their work so much until age 65, right now, they get absolutely nothing for doing that because all their sick days are therefore not traded in ever. They never took advantage of those four years of insurance. At least under my plan, sick days earned from this point forward that we pass this, although the reduced total sick days they can have, those sick days can now be cashed in for a Viva benefit that they could not have now. So there's, will be some incentive for staff who are wanting to stay until age 65, that they could still get some extra benefit that they have right now. So that has a little bit of both aspects to it. Correct me where I erred.
No, it's correct.
Commissioner Murray.
So, so that's the confusion, or I don't agree with that as true grandfathering. You know, when I think of grandfathering is that these individuals, we're talking about the teacher group in this scenario, that they truly enjoy the four years, plus they will be able to acquire additional four years if they have enough sick time, so nothing would change. That's why, when I think of grandfathering, there's a point in time where nothing changes, they enjoy the same. So we're, that's not, we're talking a little bit different. So let me put it this way, if I was a teacher, and I'm going to turn, if this was enacted, and I turn 57 the day that this goes into place, Scenario Five, and I have enough accumulated sick time to purchase four additional years, what happens to that person? Under this scenario, what happens? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, well.
So I'm thinking I'm getting four and four is eight, I'm 57, that gets me to 65. So what, tell me what's going to happen if I stay and this goes into place, you know?
Can I respond again or not?
I can. Four years, so you, let's take the four-year scenario, Commissioner Murray, for a moment. And the person, let's say it's a teacher, and they have the, they've reached the eligibility of their ages, 55, 65. They have their 10 years into the district plus 20 WRS, they're eligible. In the old system, in the old or the current system, they would, as you said, have four years, plus if they had additional sick days, they could earn up to four additional years. In Mr. Sodeman, Commissioner Sodeman's plan, they would also be able to purchase additional months for their health benefit based on their sick leave that has been accrued up to July or June 30th of this year. So if they have accumulated, let's say, 130 days, they would be able to use that 130 days to purchase additional months. Now, we did say in the scenario that those additional days, those sick days would be per diem. So you would times whatever unused sick days you have per diem, and then use that dollar amount to purchase months of health benefits. And depending on how many sick leave days you have accrued by that time, and depending on what your per diem is at that time, you could purchase quite a bit of sick leave. So I did a scenario, I ran a scenario, and I, you know, I could see how someone could have three additional years of sick leave based on that.
Or more, I mean, they.
Or more.
What is the, the, for instance, 130 is the number of days now you get for four more years. So 130, that took an average ending pay of 360 a day is perhaps a per diem at the, when you retire, just to pick number. That's almost $50,000 worth, 46.8. So if the premium is $1,000 a month or so, that's 48 months almost of possible insurance. Now, that probably doesn't cover family coverage premium, but it certainly probably covers an individual, maybe spouse and individual, I'm not sure what the current rates are, but.
Family is 14, a little over 1,400.
Okay, so it wouldn't cover family coverage, but I'm thinking at age 65, maybe your family is, your spouse, not so much, I'll be different, I'll be have kids forever, but for the most normal people, it would be, you know, covering perhaps all four years still, or close to it, depending upon their situation.
And that would be in place for 10 years, until eligible within the next 10 years. And then the following 10 years, it's the same, only it's three health, three years of health insurance, and then purchase additional.
Thanks. So when we move these two scenarios forward, which I think is probably going to happen, and then we get the results back, right? Number six, we already kind of know what that's going to be, we've gotten that data two years in a row, and it really hasn't changed. Scenario Five, we're going to get new data because it wasn't, there was, well, we're going to get new data, right? But then if we start to have this debate, if there's compromise to a particular scenario, does that mean then we have to go back again and get in new numbers? You know what I'm saying? You know, I mean, this is going to be a long process because I will, you know, if whatever gets to action, excuse me, on Scenario Five, I should say, I'm going to be continuing to push for true grandfathering as long as I can. Because I think this is not true grandfathering, because there's, we've converted it to dollars instead of sick time I've earned. You know, there's difference to me there. So, so I'll just leave it at that, because that's, we're not taking any action other than taking a look. But I just don't feel like, this certainly won't be ready for this, this next budget year, next fall, I just don't see that happening.
Commissioner Dahmerhausen.
Having sat on the Benefits Committee, but now I won't be going forward. I wish the information I received this last meeting were two things, something we got six months ago, and something that had final figures on Scenario Five. It disturbs me when we, for lack of a better term, and I've used it before, we're not crossing the Ts and dotting the Is at this point. We don't know cost, we don't know parts, and I could take every one of these, and I think I could pick something out of them that might make some sense. Therefore, I want to offer an amendment. I want to move forward only looking at Scenario Five for costing purposes only, to bring it in line. Then allow the committee to do its work, and the changes that will be decided will, in the next year, will take place for the 2015 and 16 year. That gives us time to do it. That's my amendment. If I word it, if you can word it better, go for it.
As I understand your amendment, it is to only move forward with Scenario Number Five.
Just for costing purposes, so a decision can be made by the committee.
Is there a second?
A question. That is the original motion, except we're not, we're not voting on this as being the plan tonight, this is to get the information on it. So if I understood your motion, the only difference is you want to guarantee right now it can't happen sooner than later? Because that's what the motion is, we're not taking a final vote on this tonight, this is simply which one we're going to get more information on, so what, what is the difference?
Maybe, I need to reword it, thank you.
So actually, what the original motion was is Scenario Five and also the current plan, both of those. And as I understand Commissioner Dahmerhausen's motion, is we wouldn't take the current plan to be evaluated.
But they also said 15, 16, so you're saying you're negating, I mean, I don't think, tonight, you're, we want to vote on that we're not going to do this at all? As part of, that's not even an agenda item to say we're not going to change it tonight, this is simply an agenda item to see what we're going to look at.
I did not understand his motion to be that. It seemed like he was editorializing.
May I reword it? May I reword it? My per, let me ask one question first. Are we making a decision for the 14, 15 year?
Right now?
Not tonight.
But this is what we're working on for the 14, 15 year?
We may, yes.
We may, or we won't?
Until we take, until we take action, we haven't taken action, so.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is, there's a lot unknowns in this yet. And I think the committee needs time to work on it and get it correct. And I don't think it can be rushed that fast for this current year, for HR, for anyone else, to make a decision without being rushed. And I'd like to take the time, and for this moment, I would yield the floor to Commissioner Murray, if I may. I'll come back to me later.
Is there a motion on the table?
Let's step aside of that at the moment.
There is no motion on the table. So, and actually, Commissioner DeStefano.
Thank you. Just a couple of points that I wanted to mention earlier, and didn't look at my notes. With Scenario Five, with the cost, and one of the things that Linda Mont had mentioned to us, there was a misunderstanding with the communication with Bill, with Scenario Five and key benefits. So if you look at those figures, she told us for the next 10 years, they would not exceed current, okay? So they could be lower than current, but they would not exceed current. Commissioner Murray, Commissioner Sodeman, Commissioner Dahmerhausen, we're all there, is that?
That's right.
So I wanted the board to understand that, so, you know, I think that will also factor in. And then, just a comment on Commissioner Murray with the grandfathering. While I agree with you, you know, part of the value of healthcare, in my opinion, with Obamacare has changed. Because in the past, the access to healthcare was as big an obstacle for many as the cost. And now, with subsidies and with the insurance companies cannot deny based on pre-existing conditions, healthcare in the ideal situation, and obviously it's going to be continually changing, but is affordable based on their standards and accessible is guaranteed. So I think a couple of years ago, the grandfathering may have been a bigger deal than it is today and in the future. That is my opinion, that's not the opinion of the Benefits Committee, I want to make that very clear, that is my opinion, so, I'm good.
Commissioner Murray.
Thanks, I have differing opinions on that, so I suggest, this motion is simply to get, keep moving.
Yes.
So I suggest our next Benefits meeting is June 4th at 8:30 in the morning, because I have a lot of other questions about OPEB, you know, all this that's going on. So we're going to have plenty of time in committee, we'll have plenty of time at board meetings to discuss all this. So I support the motion to move Five and Six forward.
Commissioner Myers.
I really hate to ask a, probably a really silly question, but the benefits we're talking about, is this only applying to teachers or is this entire staff? Entire staff, okay, all right, because I guess I just wasn't clear about that. Okay, that was my.
Any other discussion? So the motion that we have is to send Scenario Five and the current plan to key benefits for long-term evaluation. The board should vote. And that passes unanimously. Next is consider approval of.
Next is consider approval of potential adjustments to other post-employment benefits.
Dr. Kael?
It's me again. Hello again. I'm bringing an issue for the board to consider this evening, and that issue is to consider extending the current OPEB, the current early retirement benefit for another year with two caveats, though. One of them would be that the, the deductible would be the same as our active plan. Currently, it is not. And that our drug pay would be the same as our active plan. Currently is not. So in, in essence, to mirror our early retirement health plan to be the same as the active plan, including the same premium shares actives, which we had put in place for this year. And one of the reasons why I'm asking this is because we do have some teachers who are waiting to hear what the OPEB plan will be for next year. Though they had sent us their notification for retirement, they do have till June fifteen to rescind that notification. And so some of them are waiting, and that, of course, affects our ability to, well, not necessarily depose, but to move with our staffing plans as well. So it's the consideration that I'm asking you to discuss.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Dahmer?
Can I make a question before the motion, or would you rather I do?
I'd rather... I'll make the motion to approve that scenario, to continue the early retirement benefits for another year with modifications.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Murray, second by Commissioner Dahmerhausen, to continue the benefits with the modifications. Commissioner Dahmerhausen?
Okay. Now, my question was, this is for everyone, not just those that are turned in their resignation.
That is correct. So we would extend it one year.
So everyone has the same opportunity.
To retire next year under these benefits.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, okay, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Sodeman?
Well, by the time I'm done with the board, we'll probably eventually finish these issues up. No, we don't have an exact replacement plan to show someone, but they have some pretty good ideas. It's going to be close for those who are, I think, retiring the next year. How close, we're not sure, but relatively close. And to keep on pushing this thing out, and out, and out, and out. Folks, we got to move ahead on some of these things. And, again, is even a, a benefit if we adopt something like my plan, where, again, someone who wants to work till age sixty-five can now get something they don't have right now, to reward for unused sick days under the new formula, if you will. So to, once again, extend this out another year. Please, let's, do you ever have every penny information known before you retire, or not? No, but this, you have a pretty good idea so far what the board has done. We've all talked about grandfathering, vast majority of not all of it, depending upon how we calculate the days. And I ask, if we don't just keep pushing this thing further and further down the road, let's get something done for a change.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Myers?
Commissioner Murray was talking about grandfathering with the, the last set. And so I guess I'm just wondering, is, is that grandfathering thing, is, is this your view of grandfathering in this case, or is this, so anyways?
It is, to me, this is even a compromise. What this does is now, from now on, if we retire, or if you early retire, your premium share, your deductibles and co-pays moves as if you were active, where previously, they didn't. So that's, that's part of this modification plan. The piece that stays in place is, if you're a teacher, you're still eligible to get up to eight years. The change is the, the co-pays deductibles and the premium share moves.
Dr. Kael?
Commissioner Murray, previously, when the retirees, when we all had one health plan, the early retirees, that was the same. They did have the same plan as active, but we only had one plan. And then September first of this year, we split up in the two plans. So they were just trying to align everybody back on the active plans, but I know the deductibles and the co-pay for drug would change, of course, but they were aligned at one time to the active plans, and we're just trying to kind of get back to that.
Seeing none, we have a motion on the table to extend the early retirement benefits with the modification as described for, as described by Dr. Kael. Everyone's clear on the vote here, I'm assuming? If not, we can clarify?
We have one question. We want to include the year for fourteen, fifteen, because I believe that you're talking about.
Yes. So with that clarification, would you please read the motion?
Commissioner Murray, no. Seconded by Commissioner Dahmerhausen to approve administration's recommendation to continue OPEB benefit with the modifications for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen year.
Thank you. Okay. The board should vote. And that passes seven to two with Commissioners DiStefano, Myers, Dahmerhausen, Argy, Hasselbacher, Murray, and Thompson voting yes, and Commissioners Schilling and Sodeman voting no. That takes us back to item number ten, with a motion on the floor of eliminating our May twenty-seventh board meeting and our second meeting in July.
Commissioner DiStefano?
I would like to amend my motion if possible, and have it read, eliminating the second board meeting in July, meet June third of two thousand fourteen, and then eliminate the June tenth meeting.
Twenty-seventh and June tenth.
So eliminate the May twenty-seventh and June tenth meeting, meet June third, eliminate the second July meeting, and then obviously, if needed, the board president can call additional meeting if required.
Is there a second?
We have an amendment to play his own motion, to eliminate the second meeting in July, and to meet June third, and eliminate the June tenth meeting. And it was seconded by Commissioner Dahmerhausen. Discussion? Commissioner Murray?
So we're still meeting the twenty-seventh of May?
No, and eliminate.
And eliminating, I'm sorry. And eliminating. May twenty-seventh. So we would eliminate the twenty-seventh, meet the third, eliminate the tenth, and the second meeting in July. Any further discussion needed? The board should vote. That passes unanimously.
Greg, I think technically that was an amendment. We got to actually vote on the motion as amended, even though it's...
Yeah, I hadn't forgotten that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I hadn't forgotten that. Thank you.
Unless you want to discuss it further for a couple more hours, and we can do that, I'm sorry.
So now, the motion that is on the floor is to eliminate the May twenty-seventh meeting, meet June third, eliminate the June tenth meeting, and the second meeting in July. Any discussion needed? Seeing none, the board should vote. That passes unanimously. Eliminated three meetings. Okay. Next, announcement.
Commissioner Hasselbacher?
With the new makeup of the PPC committee, we'll have to find an evening that we can meet. So I'll do that via email here in the next few days, even if we, because we were scheduled for Wednesday, the twenty-something in the day, but we'll find a time, so...
Dr. Shalti?
Thank you, Board President. Several weeks ago, I had the, a good pleasure to speak with Mr. Quinn Studer. And during that time, that meeting with him, I shared this with the board previously, he generously donated twenty thousand dollars to the district, ten thousand dollars for the multicultural scholarship fund, and another ten thousand dollars to be donated in behalf of Lori Burns, to create a program for, for employees, teachers, principals, et cetera, to study award-winning schools around our country. So I drafted a letter, and I thought it would be nice for board members to sign off on the letter. He has a great regard for our district, and many of you know him. So if you would like to sign, I'll pass this round.
Commissioner Sodeman?
I understand our finance committee meeting, meeting is happening May twentieth at the Marshall Monroe, Marshall Middle School. So those who are on the newly formed finance committee, six fifteen, Marshall Middle School, May twentieth, see you there.
Any other announcements? Just the one that I have, actually, sort of mentioning Quinn Studer. There is a What's Right in Education conference in Chicago, August sixth, and I will be leading a session on board goals, based on our experience with setting board goals there. Any other announcements? Okay. Seeing none, next is future board agenda items.
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, I'd like to encourage the president to schedule a special board meeting next week, and that agenda would include considering wage increases for Jamesville School District's staff. Any other future board agenda items? Guess how, is there a, in front of a consensus to do that? I see a couple of, yeah, all right.
We just cancel two meetings, we're going to schedule another one back in?
But for next week.
Just shoot me.
Two steps forward, three steps back.
So... The board will be polled for availability for next week?
Well, you just want a consensus, I'm not consenting to that, but...
Enough head nods, don't consider that. Okay? Any other future board agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we have reached the end of our agenda. We are adjourned.